We'll call the meeting to order for Wycombe County Legislative Session 2022-03, February 15, 2022. Those that would like to stand and join us in the Lord's Prayer and Pleasure of Legions, please do.
Amen.
I would be honored to welcome what we've done on earth. It is now this day or day of birth. Give us our trespasses as we forgive those who trespass against us and lead us not temptation but deliver us from evil. Thine is the kingdom, the power, and the glory forever. Amen.
The pleasure of legions to the flag of the United States of America and to your home, the Lord's hands, one nation under God, indivisible, the Lord.
And justice for all.
I'd like to remind the audience, if you have cell phones, please turn them off if you could.
Council members also.
First item we have on the agenda this morning is the approval of the consent agenda. Entertained a motion from the council to approve the consent agenda?
Moved.
Second. Any discussion or corrections? Seeing none, all those in favor of the consent agenda say aye.
Aye.
Post. Motion carried. The approval of the consent agenda passes. Good morning, Mrs. Hurley. How are you?
Good morning, Mr. President, council members, ladies and gentlemen. We have one change to today's agenda, and that is the very first work session regarding a letter support for a Buffalo Soldiers Living History Site has been removed from the agenda. So the first item on the agenda this morning is a public hearing on Resolution Number 17-2022. This is to amend the fiscal year 2022 capital budget and fiscal year 2022-2026 capital improvement plan to decrease the Department of Corrections Roofing Project funding and increase the Department of Emergency Services Public Radio System project funding for the Radio Shop Building in the amount of $36,000. And we have Pam Olin here, Director of Department of Finance, if there are any questions.
Thank you, Mrs. Hurley. At this time, we open the floor for a public hearing on Resolution Number 17-2022. If you have any comments you'd like to make, please come to the podium, state your name, your county of residence, and your concerns. Seeing none, this concludes the public hearing on Resolution Number 17-2022. Entertained a motion from councils to approve Resolution 17, 2022.
Still moved.
Second.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post. Motion carried. Resolution passes.
Next is a salary study presentation by Mr. Dan Ripberger, Managing Director and Practice Lee for Bolton.
Good morning. How are you?
They did bring a few extra copies. Anyone like them?
We were provided the PDF of those.
Yeah, please.
That's fine. Yeah, great. Anybody?
I have one.
Some of us still like paper, right?
I do.
I like a hard copy. Thanks.
Who did that?
Thank you for having me this morning.
Good morning.
Good morning, Mr. County Executive. I'll let whoever wants to take the lead.
Yep, I'll offer. It's my pleasure to introduce the completed salary-based pay program as commissioned to Bolton. Bolton, the purpose of this subjective study was to analyze the mark-to-market pay rate for our county positions so as to make the county competitive as it relates to recruiting and retaining qualified employees in order to ensure that high-quality core services are continuously delivered to our citizens. I'd like to introduce Dan Ripberger, Managing Director from Bolton, to walk you through the methodology and conclusions of the study. I would also ask kindly that you hold questions until the end of his presentation. And then after his presentation, Pam Olin will explain the implementation plan, how it would be funded, and our goal to implement this as soon as practical, and with our intention of honoring a commitment of annual adjustments to ensure market plan competitiveness. Dan?
Referring to page three in the handout PDF, John had mentioned the purpose of the engagement, the purpose of the project. The four major tasks or phases that we walked through, the first was really working with the county to understand the human resource, the people's strategy, and the compensation philosophy, you know, what the county needed the pay program to do. And, you know, that's also in context of trying to manage things like rewarding length of service, pension benefits, health benefits, some of the other components that exist. It's really trying to understand how pay should fit into that equation. The second phase was really reviewing what's in place now, you know, which included how it was designed originally, how it's been administered going forward, you know, how folks understand it, some of those components. And then, as needed, to design and develop either a new program or enhancements to the existing program so that it better met the needs of the county from that recruitment, retention, engagement perspective. And then the last piece is, based on those changes, help the county plan for the implementation of it. So really, you know, helping employees understand how it would work, department heads, managers, directors, looking at costs and other employee relations implications. The purpose of this report is really to kind of provide the results of it, but also outline a program that we're recommending the county adopt, because I think the program that's in place now certainly is not meeting the needs in a lot of different facets. So the approach that we took really was starting with discovery of talking to human resources, the county executives, and then we actually did interview 12 department leaders, talk through some of the recruitment issues that they were having, some of the particular job challenges that they were having, and then get a better understanding of how each has organized their different functional areas or their departments. That's a big part of when we look at the market, really making sure that we're comparing apples to apples in terms of what people are doing at different levels. On page five, part of our discovery was also doing a market survey, and we conducted a pay survey of 12 counties that are listed here. These are peers, obviously by proximity, but also counties that we had worked with, the county executives and the HR team around, trying to make sure there was some comparability. The results of the survey, we were able to collect data on over 3,700 employees in the region, and we actually look at actual pay rates. You know, I know sometimes you'll see surveys where they look at pay ranges and some of those pieces. We actually are able to get person-by-person, not name-by-name, but, you know, a listing of employees that says, this person makes, you know, $60,000 a year, this person makes 40, and they're matched to a job. So it gives us what we feel to be a much more credible picture of what the actual going rates are, you know, what you'd have to pay to hire a particular person. Positively, with this approach, we were actually able to match over 90% of the county's jobs, which in terms of looking at various levels and minute differences, which is extremely high, in my opinion. Typically, if we can get 80%, we've really been able to match clearly. So starting to talk about some of the program recommendations and not wanting to belabor the council with some of our findings of the existing system, I think that the first thing that we're recommending is that the county focus much more on jobs than the current system, which is based on a person, based on a position. So we're really talking about managers and department heads providing a little bit of conscientious thought around, here's how we're going to organize work, and here's what we're going to title the jobs, and we're going to create these distinct units of work. And then the point for an employee would be assigning them to that job based on how many people they would need and some of those issues. So in terms of job analysis and descriptions, rather than the system that kind of exists now, it's a little unclear from a position questionnaire perspective how some of the data comes together. But it's really having the manager work with HR to come up with an effective, approved, classified job, meaning comes up with a job description, writes the essential functions of that role, you know, what it's supposed to do, lists the job requirements, you know, education, experience, special skill, and then that job is actually classified. We'll talk a bit about that process a little bit. We are suggesting that the county maintain an employee-completed questionnaire as potential communication tool, but I do think in this sort of an approach, it's really more of a supportive tool for kind of an open-door discussion, you know, where if an employee and a manager can't come to terms with the job they're assigned to, it would provide an additional tool for HR to help work through and come up with that right decision. So a couple of the new tools that we developed, there's a job description template, and then there's a revised and a new position questionnaire. From the job classification perspective, in job classification, I know folks, but from a common definition, simply for us, the job classification is the item that gets put into a pay grade. You know, it is the item that says, it's this grade X, and then there's a pay range of, you know, from this dollar amount to this dollar amount. So the system that we're recommending employs a job-family and career-level approach. So we will have a number of job families, such as recreation, human resources, facilities, maintenance. All of these have a number of levels that have been established and described underneath them. So you might have four levels of facility maintenance, you know, you might have three levels of professional human resources, some of those things. Each one of those are benchmarked in the market and priced and assigned to a grade. That would be the classification process. All of the current county jobs have been classified, and as I had mentioned, a new job is classified by assigning it to a job family at a career level, because those have all been, you know, benchmarked and aligned to the marketplace and have ranges. One important distinction that I wanted to make, which is why it's highlighted in an orange, is that classifying a job has no budget impact. It basically would just set up a bucket that then a department head or a manager could try and determine budget or get approval for an additional head or additional position. So trying to separate the compensation portion or what's fair from a range perspective for this job, from whether it makes sense to, from a budgetary perspective, to allow them to hire a person in that. So the big deliverable from that perspective, the job classification plan, so as I had mentioned, all of the jobs are classified and all of those are listed. On page eight, I point this out, it's harder to demonstrate. One of the challenges that we found is a lot of inconsistency in titles across different departments, and I don't know that it even leads to so much how jobs have been classified or graded, but it really hurts employee perceptions of whether things are fair, because the titles themselves aren't clear. So what we're recommending is coming up with a system of titles that would then be applied to all of the jobs, and I think the majority of jobs would be slightly re-titled, at least. And there's really just three main components to that, and all of these are really intuitive. We label them so that we can describe them. The first is sort of a family or technical identification, so it's equipment, recreation, accounting, human resources, parks, so it would be part of the title. Then there's a name for the type of work that's completed, so manager, specialist, operator, you could have representative, you could have clerk. All of these would be purposely used, and there would be some sort of central approach to it. Certainly, it is something that, there's a lot of department head and manager involvement, but part of the consistency, I think, really needs to reside within human resources, at least from a. And the last piece, and this goes a little bit with the career families and being able to help build some progressions in terms of, as people grow, is a designation for the level of work. And this may exist for management roles, but more so for individual contributor roles, where basically you might have a senior clerk versus a clerk, but there's specific designation in kind of what those titles mean. So you might have, you know, an entry-level person in accounting, you might have a mid-level and then a senior level, but there's titles that describe each one of those level descriptions. So on page nine, really nine and 10, we looked at the marketplace and, you know, understanding there are a lot of ways to manage pay on an ongoing basis in the marketplace. We came up with two different structures. One, we're calling the main structure, but that is for all county employees except for corrections. So the main structure has 17 grades. The midpoint for the structure are set at the 50th percentile of the market, so kind of, you know, half in the market are higher, half are lower. They are further divided into three equal parts, and that's so when you start to administer the ranges and try to determine where in ranges someone should be paid, it gives you a little bit of additional guidance.
When you say 50th percentile, what exactly are you taking into account for? Are you talking about the pay structure within Wycombe County?
No, it's the 50th percentile of the compensation survey we conducted. So of those 12 counties, it is, it's the median of the reported rates for the.
So you're taking a 12-county combination?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct.
Thank you.
There is one broad range for the attorneys currently, for all of the state's attorneys. And one of the things to point out, different from the step structure, which I'll touch on briefly, the ranges can be increased from year to year, you know, based on market movement, but they don't automatically result in a pay increase. It's a separate designation. The ranges themselves really represent longer-term pay growth, and the actual pay is that, is someone who's in the same job. One of the things, and this is on page 10, looking at the main structure, that we've tried to build into the system is that, in terms of what we've termed midpoint progression, which is just the percentage difference between consecutive midpoints, we set it so that it's wide enough apart that you can make distinctions, and it's somewhat clear between grades in terms of jobs, but it also isn't too wide that you're able to have some progression built in in terms of helping people, you know, go from one level to a next and maybe having some growth. Part of it is to help offset or provide some tools to work with such challenges as compression and the other issues that kind of. The correction step structure on page 11, it is, and this is a common design, so step seven on the correction structure is set at the 50th percentile, and that's because, you know, after seven years, it is almost automatic that someone would be at that step, so it would be at the 50th percentile. The progression in grades from one level to the next varies from 10% to 15%, and then the step increase amounts per hour will vary from 2% to 3%. So there's a couple of dynamics going on. The big difference, or one of the big differences, is as you would change this structure, it would also change actual pay, because you would want to keep people on at least the same step. So even if you have someone at the top level of the step, it would mean that if you were going to increase the structure by 2%, all of the corrections people on the structure would have 2%. So in terms of the recommended salary steps on page 12, there are two, I'll say probationary levels for corrections officers. These aren't intended to be long-term roles, but they are level one and level two, you know, before you would get to the full-time regular master corrections officer. The other is, we did create an additional classification of a corporal, and as I was mentioning before, there are no positions budgeted for this at this time, and it might not be a role that would ultimately be funded or budgeted, so it might not actually have a position. But there is a classified bucket for it at this point. There is that job that exists. So from an initial market comparison, and there's certainly more that goes into this as you look on a person-by-person basis, which is really that's necessary, we use a term, and I'm sure a lot of you are familiar, it's a very common term, of a compa ratio, which is simply an employee's pay divided by the midpoint or the target for their role. And if someone's at 100%, they're paid right at that target, so they'd be right at your 50th percentile target. The caveat I always throw in is, you never know if that person is new in the job, so maybe they shouldn't be at the 50th, or maybe they've been in that job for a long time, so they should be above the 50th. The overall picture, though, is that the compa ratio is 87%, so rates are 13% below market. On the correction structure, it's a bit more competitive, it's a bit more, but it's a 93% compa ratio, so it's 7% below market. And given the sample size, the number of employees, we really would expect both of those to be at 100% overall. Sometimes if you have a small organization or particularly large, or there's some other dynamic going on, you know, you might see a compa ratio that's not at that 100%, but, you know, I do believe that would be accurate. As we look a little bit further, these are looking at career groups. So when we look at the career levels and have those defined, there are levels defined for each one of these career groups. And looking at the compa ratio, you can see that overall, it's, based on this weighting, it's at 89.3%. But if you look at management in particular, it's actually 15%, approximately 15% below market, and the non-exempt staff is about 10% below. So you do see some variation based on the role type.
Excuse me?
Yes?
I just want to clarify something. On page 14, that, the percentage, the average compa ratio, that's below market. The 87.7, that's below market?
It is.
And that's current here? Okay.
Yeah, if you do the difference between 100%, so it would be 12.3% below market. Yep. So on page 15, this is just looking, you know, I mentioned that the range is, so this is for the main structure. This is not the correction structure, but we had those three groupings. The middle third, we kind of call the market range. There is some variance in terms of a plus or minus on an individual and their competitiveness to market, but the distribution shows that 38% are in the lower third, at the low end of the range, and there's actually almost 40% that are below the minimum of the new Only 14 people who are currently listed as above the maximum. So to me, this sort of further highlights that there are probably some competitive issues to try and address in actual pay.
Taking that into consideration, too, I don't know if you and the executive and finance director have had a discussion, but what do you, how would Wycombe County consider the addressing, like wage compression or salary compression issues when you're looking at these type of numbers?
I mean, our recommendation would be to fix them, you know, to bring them into a line. There are some approaches, and I know that it'll be able to get it to it in more detail with Pam's presentation, that will say, you know, based on some generally accepted definitions, this is where in the range this person should be paid, and you can look at how far off they are from that. So that would give an indication of where it should be from there. Certainly, there's discussion of trying to phase it in, you know, based on affordability and some of that. I think we always look at that as part of trying to manage the employee relations aspect to it as well, you know, in particular in terms of what employees would accept, you know, whether it would be good enough to move things progressively or to try and do it at one time, you know, to try and get it there. So this is really talking about kind of projected increases, and the market's very strange right now, and I'll admit, my profession, I don't think we're sort of equipped to provide good, hard data in terms of what the increases are going to be.
Yeah.
We're so retrospective with it, and I've already heard that 5% is a closer figure. I just, I wouldn't want to present that, because, you know, it's hawk. So these are data from some of the major surveys in a summarized form in terms of what actual pay increases were, as well as what structural adjustments were. So last year, for example, for your professional staff, well, pretty much, it's around 1.6% is what organizations adjusted the structure. Then their pay increase budgets increased by 3.1%, and the projections for this year in this table are only slightly higher. I will say that we're suggesting that organizations budget higher than this and somewhere between 4% and 5% for actual merit adjustments. This is one of the challenging areas, when you, there's all sorts of things that create pay compression, but one of which is where the market's moving faster than you're increasing your employee's pay. So you bring someone in from the outside, and you have to pay them a higher rate, so it creates sort of an equity issue. So that's where trying to keep up internally has become difficult for a lot of employers. So this is just more of a policy piece to it, and I know the policy manual is being reviewed and being updated, but the actual pay rate should be compared to the pay ranges, and it's based on the number of years the employee's been in that actual job, and it could be certainly at the county, but it could be somewhere else, you know, if they were in that exact role somewhere else. And it's really just trying to determine, you know, what the market really is for that individual, rather than just the job itself. And then, once that's done, you really look at some of the ongoing policies to be reviewed. It's, you know, hiring rate determination, it's as you get approval for a position, how do you budget for that position? You know, what is the rate you actually put into the budget? Annual increase plans. Is it a general cost of living across the board? Do you want it on a type of performance basis? And then there are other policies, like with promotional increases, if someone moves jobs, if someone's demoted, some of those sorts of additional considerations. And then lastly, on page 18, there are a lot of additional steps, you know, after this for implementation. I think this is where the real effectiveness of this approach comes into play, because we're actually able to hopefully get mostly consensus among the senior team, you know, among department heads, at least understanding, you know, around what's trying to occur. And I think there's a lot of room for development across the board, you know, in terms of helping departments run better a lot of those components. With that, I'm happy to go into more detail on any particular topic or respond to any questions.
Okay. Thank you. Any questions?
I see where you worked with the department heads, some of the department heads. Did you reach out to any of the employees other than department heads, you know, considering work environment, morale, or anything that?
work environment, morale, or anything like that that concerned their pay?
We did not. Now, we did look at work environment, that's certainly a compensable factor. I mean, that is something that would influence what the job would be worth, but we really didn't get into employee satisfaction specifically with the system.
I also see on page 5, you know, we do compete, I guess you say, somewhat with the Western Shore. And I know that in the past, you know, different items, different things have come up that we, you know, we have used comparables for counties on the Western Shore, but you didn't reach, why did you just stay with the Eastern Shore? Other than, I know you said you worked with some of these counties before.
Because as we saw the results come back and how clear they were from a competitiveness perspective, my big concern was anything that would be, you know, including bringing in published survey data from other employers would really just muddle, to me, what was a very clear picture of the marketplace, that most direct.
Would you say that the Eastern Shore is kind of in a marketplace of its own compared to the rest of the state?
I would say it is different, certainly. I mean, and I think it's one that there are a lot of markets that are like the Eastern Shore, and they could be somewhere else, you know, they could be, I don't say in the middle of Kansas, but a lot of where people want to be here, you know.
We are on an island, kind of.
That, but people want to be here, you know, it's their long, long term. So it's a mix of types of folks, so.
Thank you, Dan, for being here, appreciate it. I know we do have the question, I guess we've got comparables for the majority of the Del Marva Peninsula. I guess my only question in my mind, do we have enough data or understanding when it comes to state comparable? Something like, you know, we talked about corrections, obviously, we have our own corrections internal, but we also have the state to compete with. Do we feel like we have enough of an understanding how we compare when it comes to the state so that we're not losing jobs to other competing state offices? And not just corrections, obviously, there are other departments within the county where folks can easily go and work for the state for a similar position. I guess I don't want the state to be poaching too many of our people, or if we just lose it for not being competitive. You have any clarity on that?
Yeah, specifically with corrections, you know, as we talked to the warden, you know, she was fairly clear that the state and some of the issues were there. So it's not listed here, but we did investigate the state and what their structure was for that. Outside of corrections, you know, I just think there's enough competitive challenges, just looking at the other counties, that in the future, if states were an issue, it would be worth looking at, but it just seems like there's some room for growth with the market that you're looking at now.
I had a couple of questions for you, thank you for coming. So you, in doing this, you just used government parity. You didn't use any nonprofits or profits, or strictly government?
From the market perspective?
Yes.
It's strictly these?
The government.
Huh?
Okay. All right, and then, and this is just, this is just a general question with the other counties you've worked with. Do they have in-house human resources that implements your plan, or are there counties that have outsourced human resources? Because, you know, I think one of the issues that we have in Waukesha County is not just pay, but do we have the resources to do it, right? I mean, how, how many resources do we have here to actually implement this? Are there counties that outsource it?
Yeah, it kind of goes back and forth. Usually, there is a relationship that we develop that is county by county, or organization by organization, where it's completely dependent upon the staff and what HR wants to do or not do, you know? So there are certain tasks that we will take care of on an ongoing basis, on a year-to-year basis, and it really just depends. So your question certainly is very valid. I think it's something that the HR team are thinking about currently.
All right, and then, I saw Department of Corrections, and I saw the county executive and sheriff. Do you have everyone else's salaries?
Me employees?
Yes. Okay. I guess, will we be getting those soon?
Meeting?
All the employees in the county?
In due time, as we work through this going forward.
Okay, but you have them?
I'm sorry?
But you have them?
Yes, we have them.
Yeah, they just weren't included?
On the administrative side, we have them, yes.
The only employee group that wasn't included in the study was the bargaining unit with the sheriff.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Any other questions?
Thank you for the presentation, Mr. Ripberger. This all we're getting?
For me, at this time, yeah, certainly.
Okay.
Follow-up.
Because I stopped at the booth at Mako in August, and there were two pretty thick spiral-bound books that had Waukesha County on it for the salary survey.
Yeah, you know, and that, I'll be honest.
That was six months ago.
That was my mistake. What that was, that was the questionnaire we used to conduct the survey. So there was no information in it, other than it was a representative thing. We were at Mako, and we were doing a project for Waukesha. So it was specifically the instrument, a printout of the instrument, that we sent to the 12 counties here. So there wasn't any actual data that was in there.
It was a prop.
It was a prop. It was. It was trying to link us with your great county.
Nothing wrong with that.
And you're welcome to it, absolutely.
Thank you.
Yeah, absolutely.
I guess the question might be, John, if I could ask, how do you, do you have a sense right now for how you would be implementing this, is it for fiscal year '23, or Pam? And where do you think that might come into play as far as the budget overall?
Absolutely. Pam will present that. We're very encouraged that we have the ability to do it. And to Dan's point, and to your point regarding compression, we would like to implement this at one time. I have heard anecdotally in how other salary surveys have been implemented, not fully. I think the employee needs to understand that we're looking out for them, and we're trying to implement a plan as fully and as competent, as completely as possible to look out for them. And that's what we're going to do, and that's what we're going to present.
Which is good, because, you know, we know, we all occasionally will run into employees who are at one place or another, and we, you know, they share with us their frustration as to what their salary might be, and some particular departments, how they see that as an issue throughout a department. So I think there are a lot of different areas where adjustments do need to be made. I think we can recognize that.
So this is an overall, the view that Pam's going to present on how we can implement this, and as Dan stated, there will be continuing working through the implementation part to make sure that there, that we address any unintended consequences or what have you. But we want to make sure that there's a clear understanding, we're talking about positions and not persons in that position.
Right.
We're talking about pay ranges, where you fall in years of service in that particular position, not the person.
So.
Let us know who you are.
Oh, sorry. Pam Holland, Finance Director.
Thank you.
So, as stated, we received all this data, and we also received data by person to look at. And again, this study is taking into account how long, what our market is, and how long somebody has been in service. This study did not take into account the FOP or the command staff, because they were all taken care of during the contract on July 1st. Otherwise, the other employees within the county were taken, were looked at and classified. And then every position that is currently filled was taken by position, put on the scale, sorry, blanked out there a second, put on the scale, and looked at the number of years of service in the position. So for my personal example, I've only been in my position a year and a half. I've been with the county over eight. So it is not your longevity, per se, with the county, it's your longevity in the position that you're in. And so we then took that information, calculated how much, based on current budget, each employee should get if we did a 2.5%, as long as you were below the market, or below your spot, 2.5%, then put you at the minimum, and then put you at your years of service. And what that says is that for the current positions that are filled, we're at almost $1.8 million short on salaries for all the positions. And then we add in the concept of vacant positions for corrections and all other vacant positions within the county. That comes up to almost $2.25 million. Our recommendation as administration is that we would be coming to you in March with a budget amendment for fiscal '22 to implement this on the first full pay period in April. So employees would get this pay range or raise if they, for what they would qualify for in April for the last three months of this fiscal year. And in addition, when you receive your budget for fiscal '23, these would be loaded in for the budget as well. As such, based on the research that we have done on the American Rescue Plan, now that the final guidance is out, with the original guidance, raises didn't count. In the final guidance that was put out, there is a statement that says, "Providing worker retention incentives, including reasonable increases in compensation." If we are not competitive in the market, we're not retaining our people. This would be reasonable, and so we feel that some of our American Rescue Fund money can help fund this in the next, for the last part of this fiscal year and next fiscal year. And what I have provided to you is the cost for, what it would cost for the first 15 months, including a 30% benefit load, that's just an estimate as to what the benefit load would be on this, as well as then a 3% increase each fiscal year thereafter, to again, continue the progression of our employees moving up based on their longevity. And so the administration would be bringing to council a budget amendment in March, and as well present the budget for fiscal '23 with these numbers.
The fiscal 2023 number, so you're saying that there won't be, let's say, a 2% or 3% raise for the employees? There will be a compensation made based on these studies? That probably will be somewhere in that same range anyway, right?
It would be, again, as you saw in the thing, there's, I think, about 14 employees that are actually currently over the scale. So those employees would not receive anything, but every other employee on the listing would receive something in this plan. Now, again, the intention is, is that this would cover 15 months.
Right.
So we would do it now to help our employees now, and also load it in the budget for '23.
Larry, do you have a question?
Yeah, I'll wait for you.
No, go ahead.
Well, I was wondering about the years of service, and what about the evaluation, performance evaluation? How does that work into it?
So as of right now, this is not a merit-based system. This is a system based on longevity, longevity in position. So if your employee is, if you're having difficulties with your employees, we should be working on providing the appropriate counseling and training to make sure that our employees are filling the positions as needed. Again, we are basing this on a longevity in position. We currently don't have a system in place to provide a merit. That is something that we can look at in the future, but the implementation of this plan would be a longevity plan, not a merit plan.
This is really just the implementation cost of the system. So this is trying to determine, you know, we're focusing on jobs. It's based on the number of years someone's been in that job. Where should they be in the range, which is where a lot of these figures are coming from? It's not determined exactly yet what an ongoing increase plan or what the basis would be. So certainly merit's still a potential going forward, or some other mechanism to help pay stay competitive once this implementation.
Without a doubt, many, if not all, of our employees are underpaid, and I hope this will be the beginning to bring our countywide employees up to par.
And that's, our intention is, is that Bolton ranked all the employees, and ranked by, I meant by putting them in the scales that they've created. They have looked at the years of service. This is not something that HR or finance had a hand in. It has been done, a step removed from us, and so there has not been any manipulation of this information. It has been information that is cut and dry. This is how many years, I'm in, I'm in this position a year and a half. So they took and put me in a position for a year and a half. And so, again, our, our thought process is, accept the study. We have hired a qualified company to help us with this, and we feel that it is appropriate to implement it to the whole, the whole thing, and not take it piecemeal. We have tried piecemeal in the past, and it has not worked. We have started piecemeal and not completed it, or other things, and so our thought is, here it is. And let, let us put our employees on a pay scale that is appropriate for the market and appropriate for how long they've been in their position.
Yeah, I really appreciate the fact that you took the initiative, you and, of course, the executive as well, took the initiative to implement this in April.
Absolutely.
Because you're getting right on it, which is, I think, a good thing.
Absolutely, and that's the goal. It's been my instruction to the team that we want to implement this as soon as possible once we found the funding source to do so, not only now, but as we can, as we go forward, because we have to, these are called recurring costs, and we need to make sure that we can cover that going into the future. But the bottom line is, we need to take care of the employee for retention and recruitment.
Let me ask a question, Ms. Early. Do you, or whoever, do you think this would require any type of amendment to the current budget, operating budget, to make these adjustments? Or will they?
We would need a budget amendment.
There would be budget amendment.
So that's, again, our thought process is, I'm not here the first meeting in March, so the thought process is, we would come.
Do it then.
Thought process is, is we would come the second meeting in March with a budget amendment for fiscal '22 to be able to fund this by, by department. So the adjustment would have to be by department, and we would also have to adjust the position control document, again, because that is, that lists the position, and so it would be changing the, you know, we're going from a grade 17 to a grade, and I'm making these up because I don't remember by, a grade 37, whatever, you know, whatever that new, so the position control document would also be updated and be provided to you, and then, again, we would implement it for the first full pay period in April.
At the same time, will we be also approving the new titles? You know how that's?
That's on the position control.
Okay, good, thanks.
And the titles themselves, for the most part, aren't changing. It's more of what classification they are. Again, being, our old grading system is a grade 17, and now this range is like in the 30s, I think.
Understood.
I believe the titles will also be changing, but that might be a progressive.
And, but some of the, again, those would all happen on that, and that's part of the other reason why we want to make sure we have it clean and appropriate, and it would be the second meeting in March.
Okay, any other questions? All right, well, thank you very much, Mr. Ripberger. We appreciate your hard work. And Pam and John, same to you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hey, Pam.